The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at seven o'clock. Secretary please call and roll.
Kendra Barberina is here, Dennis Sabolsky.
Here.
Jim Harb.
Here.
John Idzel.
Here.
Bob Dorshavitz.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
And Bill Pratt is excused.
And we have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Harb and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the agenda as submitted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And the approval of the minutes of our April 17 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the April 17 meeting.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Harb and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the April 17 minutes as submitted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, moving on, first order of new business is application 2334-0419, the McDonald's facade remodel. And Ms. Howe, your planning report?
Thank you, Commissioners. The application before you is for final site plan consideration of minor facade and some site improvements to the existing McDonald's and drive-through restaurant located at 15-110 Beck Road. I'll briefly go through our outstanding comments, which have been addressed in an email that was provided to the township earlier today and is before you this evening. The revised plans as submitted by the applicant are also at your seat this evening. So the first outstanding item was that building sample should be provided to the commission at the meeting, which the applicant has stated he will present this evening. The replacement windows on the west elevation are now noted that they will be replaced with the sprandl glass instead of a metal panel. This would be along the Beck Road frontage. And a note on one of the site plan sheets, C1, has been removed. There is to be no painting of the masonry dumpster as part of this project scope. And then the final outstanding item would be that the welcome sign would be approved as part of the site plan as additional signage. And we do have some photos if you'd like to go through. This is the existing facility. And you can see here, these two windows would be replaced with a sprandl adjacent to the northern drive-through window. This is facing Beck Road. All of the brick is to remain intact. The canopies will be shored up a bit to be more streamlined. And then the brackets painted a darker color to be more decorative. The rope lighting that is also on the building is to be removed as part of this project. And the E wood panels will be added here on the front facade. And the menu board is proposed to be smaller and digital, which would be less visible from Beck Road altogether. So we are grateful for the improvements that the applicant is making to the site. Additional pedestrian striping and ADA signage is being proposed as part of this within the parking lot, which will make it safer. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here as well to provide those material samples.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant's received communication from the fire department. They have no objections from a public safety perspective. And do you have a presentation?
My name is Frank Martin from Dorch and Martin Associates Architects. And Laura essentially went through everything that we provided and that McDonald's is offering up. Just a little history, this store is probably 25 years old. And I was involved with this store when it went up. And at the time, it was one of the few stores that it did not have a mansard roof on it. And that was because in working with the township at that time, the only way we were going to get a McDonald's in that location was to look at some other design options. So we came up with this building. And 20-some years later, McDonald's over the past four years and for the next two years, they're remodeling restaurants across the nation and spending $4 or $5 billion doing that to get rid of the mansard roofs. And we've been involved for the past four years, working with different communities and with McDonald's operators renovating their stores. And when we had the opportunity to work on this one, this one was unique in that it had canopies already that were similar to what McDonald's is proposing on a lot of the new renovations that you see. And also, it had brick, which was good brick and not brick that was all, had ranges in it that we'd have to paint in other communities in order to meet their requirements. But here, I came to visit the township planner when we got ready to start this project and indicated what we were proposing. And we had some give and take. And one of the items that I suggested is the typical brand wall that you see at the front and on the entry side is usually done in stucco. And I proposed to use what's called E wood. So I brought, this is the only piece, the only sample I brought because everything else that exists, it gets a tile that looks like wood. And it's put on, it's six inches high, 36 inches long, put up. And I think it will, it'll be different than most of the stores that you see that are redesigned. Once I came up with the design, met with Laura, I sent it into McDonald's Chicago Corporate Headquarters to get their brand review, as they call it. We have to do that with all the stores. And I essentially told them that we cannot use stucco. We are not taking down the canopies that exist because we can make them work. And they sent back an approval. And we're here to ask for that approval. The construction start date for this project, if we get approved, would be probably in early August. And it takes about 45 days to renovate one of these stores when they have to tear down mansards and all. The whole inside will be renovated also. You'll see, you'll now see that there'll be kiosks inside to order. There'll only be two order stations, positions. It's not like the old days where you have five cash registers or POSs. The menu boards are not going to be along the valance. There's going to be five right in front of you when you're ordering. And the whole concept is different. Insides are very attractive. This is a company-owned store and has been over the years. And if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions? The kiosks that you refer to, are they sort of like the ATM type of thing?
Yeah. What they are is when you walk into the entrance from the parking lot, you'll find probably two kiosks that are double-sided. You can go up there and order if you choose. With the kiosks now, there's table service. What you do is you order. You can order at the cash register also. And once you order, you'll just go and sit down with a little teepee with a number on it. And they have a tracking system inside the store and they know where you are with that teepee and they'll deliver your food. So what it does is it actually reduces some of the congestion that's always been at a front counter, people waiting to get their food. So now there's a waiting area if you have a carryout order. Otherwise, you just go and sit down, whether you order at the kiosk or whether you order at the counter.
Your letter makes note of a welcome sign. Are those welcome signs right there or is there another?
The one that you see right there, that's the only one we're proposing. And I actually brought a photo of one on a store, if you want to see it.
And it's only, it would not be on the south side of the building, just on the, just on the entrance side.
So are the golden arches in that welcome, is that lit up at night at all?
Yes.
From, okay. And the lights are hidden away by that canopy, is that how?
Actually, it's internally lighted. And then there's a, there's a downlights inside the canopy that are there now that are being changed out to LEDs.
Okay, so the arches and the welcome are internally lit there?
Actually, the welcome sign's not even lighted.
Lit up, okay.
Actually, here's one right here, right there.
Wow, right. Got it.
Can you pass that down if you'd like?
What's the, what is the material that the?
M is made of?
It's actually a flat polycarbonate and.
Polycarbonate?
Yeah.
Potato.
The same with the signs that are there now will actually be removed and new ones will go up. They don't have the charismatic look like that has now as a product.
It sounds like you were ahead of the curve 20 years ago with no mansard roof, eh?
I guess, that's what I told.
You set the standard.
Well, I'll tell you what my, my theory was. I thought I would, knowing that I did this store 20-some years ago and what I went through to get this store here, I decided I wouldn't send my idea to McDonald's first because they would tell me, we've got to change it to our McDonald's standard. And rather than go through that hassle, I decided to tell them I might have a better chance getting it approved if we do it this way. And it came back with no comment. So I've also learned over the years, that's sometimes all you have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it worked.
Well, glad you're taking the rope lighting off because that's been sort of a thorn in our side for quite a while.
That isn't something that we initially did, but that's gone, that'll be gone.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I didn't mention this, but Laura did. The ADA parking spaces, the ADA entrances are all being upgraded to meet the current ADA standards. Over time, things, over times, things change. And restrooms are all ADA, everything is, so.
Are you redoing the restrooms inside then? Is that part of the whole remodel?
It's all part of the whole remodel, yes. I think you'll really enjoy it.
Okay, good. Sounds like a, like a good plan. Okay, are there any addition, additional questions or concerns? If not, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd, thank you. Motion to approve application 2334-0419 based on the completeness of the application and the, even though there were some minor concerns, starting up the applicant's willingness to address each and every one of them.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Harb to grant tentative and final site plan approval for application 2334-0419, all in favor.
Dennis?
Yeah.
I think Laura wanted to say something.
Yeah, sorry. Commissioners, can we just include in the motion that it includes the approval of the welcome sign?
Okay.
Please?
No problem. We'll add that the welcome sign is approved.
Okay. All right. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck to you.
Congratulations.
Next is 2335-0519, the Hock dynasty. And Ms. Howe, your report?
Thank you, Commissioners. The application before you, 2335, is also for a existing remodel. This site is located at 44560 Ann Arbor Road, which is in the Ann Arbor Road Corridor District and also the DDA District. The applicant intends to remove the existing drive-through facility and convert the former bank into a dentistry office. In the ARC District, the site is considered a principal permitted use. The only expansion to the footprint is the six-by-six corner feature that will face Ann Arbor Road. And the existing pyramid roof is to be remained with the mechanical equipment screened. No change to the site circulation is proposed. While we recommend the elimination of one of the Ann Arbor Road curb cuts for greater compliance to the zoning ordinance, the applicant is not required to make such improvements with this project scope. And the two access points for the site on the southern portion will remain. There is also a northern portion onto Pine Tree Drive. The site currently has a sidewalk along Ann Arbor Road. The existing vegetation on the east and west property lines will remain. Some of the existing trees and brush will be trimmed as requested. There is no additional landscaping proposed directly along the Ann Arbor frontage, except there is some landscaping proposed directly in front of the building where a portion of the earth mound will be removed and more level to create a more welcoming appearance. We are asking the applicant to clarify how the new landscaping will be irrigated to ensure viability. The existing parking lot will be patched, sealed, and restriped. It has 46 parking spaces, including four barrier-free, which is in compliance with the proposed use. To the west here, where the drive-through canopy will be removed, the applicant is proposing eight new parking spaces, which is in compliance with the dimensions and setbacks for our ordinance, although it appears that these are to be painted lines instead of actual curbing. The planning commission would need to grant a waiver instead of having curbing on these eight parking spaces. In terms of the existing building, presently, the building is constructed of CMU block. It does not meet the facade requirements of the zoning ordinance or the Ann Arbor overlay district for the DDA. However, since this is an existing building and the applicant is bringing the building into greater compliance with our ordinance standards by adding this cultured stone along the base of the building, and then they're proposing to paint the existing CMU block a gray color. It looks a bit navy in this photo, but it is more of a subtle gray. And they are adding a couple of windows. There's no change to the existing site lighting and no signage is included as part of this application, although it's shown on the building. There is a note that states it's not being requested at this time. And the existing pole sign that is located right in front of the building today, that is to be removed as part of this project. So that will also bring the site into greater compliance with our ordinance. Per DPW, we received the following comments. The DPW foreman stated the applicant should schedule a cross-connection inspection and/or submit their plans to HydroCorp for review as a dental office. So provided that the planning commission is satisfied with the three outstanding items, which would be demonstration of irrigation, determination on the curbing, and any samples of the building materials, we do recommend tentative and final site plan approval for the facade and site improvements as this will bring the site into further compliance with our ordinance. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And the applicant is here?
Good evening, I'm Mark Davison. I'm here with Dr. Ross Hock tonight. He's a dentist, he's going to be moving into the facility. The building, the only comment I wanted to make and what, and when Laura was reading, I think she meant to say the pyramid would be removed from the roof and said remained on.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, removed.
The big, Pizza Hut type thing, that's coming off in a much smaller, less intrusive HVAC enclosure will be built on top of the roof. So that was just, I just wanted to clarify that. I do have samples here tonight of both the color of the facade and the stone. I do apologize, trying to get samples anymore is getting to be, used to be I'll go in there and get a nice sheet of them and now they're just, they want to give you the brochures and that. I'll hand this down to you. What I did on the deepest colors, because there's hundreds and hundreds of them and it's a little bit intimidating to look at, I blocked them up except for the one that we're using, okay? And then the stone is the one that I put the arrow on, so if I pass that around. To address the three outstanding items on there, the site currently has irrigation. We don't know if it works, but it will be put into working order and made to work. So, you know, we want the landscaping to live as well. So right now, we have no idea what condition it is because the landscaping was, looks like it hadn't been touched in about 10 years. So we will be taking care of that. The curbing issue is normally we would have went ahead and curved that section there, but Dr. Hock is planning, that is where the building would be expanded out, coming out, the whole inside of the building is laid out so that that would be west of the top of the screen, that the building could expand to the west. The parking spaces we put there are for employees, they're not even required. We are way over parked. We've got probably twice as many parking spots than we need on the site. But it's already asphalt. We said, let's go ahead and use it and we'll put the employees there. All the area where customers or clients be parking is all curved currently. And the ADA spaces are being brought into compliance. They are currently too small for the current ADA standard. So we are, when the plaque gets resealed and striped, that'll all be taken into account. The third item was the building samples. Right now, what we're trying to do mainly is to get rid of the squatiness of the building. If you look at it, almost looks like a bunker you would see in Normandy, the way the earth was brought up and the roof overhang is down quite low. By, we're dropping the earth down three feet lower than it is right now, it's a four-foot berm. And there'll be about 12 inches of dirt coming up on the building. We need to have a positive runoff, plus the way they put the foundations in, they accounted for that extra dirt depth with the foundation depth. So we can't go all the way down to where you would normally have it like eight inches up. Otherwise, we're no longer 42 inches to our, below our footing. So that's the reasoning behind that, plus the positive runoff, it's better to have it that way. The, as Laura had mentioned, we're adding a total of six windows on the outside of the building. On the south side, which would face Ann Arbor Road, and on the west side, which would face where the future expansion will go out later. Eventually, if that, when it gets built out to the west, those windows will just be blocked back in again. But right now, Dr. Hock would like to have windows in the operatory, so we're putting windows in the operatory. That pretty much sums it up. I'll answer any questions that anybody would have.
Well, it is definitely an improvement over what's there, so we appreciate the effort you have made to do that. That roof always reminded me of sort of a Lego building. So, yeah, it is a nice improvement. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I don't quite understand the fire access comment by the fire department in there that extending the fire access roads. Action required. Fire apparatus access road shall extend within 150 feet of all portions.
He's referring to the fire department report.
We don't have that.
The, if I may, the fire department found no deficiencies with the site plan, it's in compliance. His, his note here is that the road, the internal drive maneuvering lanes inside do wrap around the building and the code requires that they do that within 150 feet. So I think he's just explaining what the actual requirement is, but that it is met.
Yeah, he's got on there a pass.
Yeah.
Right. He's got a pass on it.
But it says action required, so it was kind of confusing.
Yeah.
Okay. Laura, did you say that the color was gray in your report?
Yeah.
It's called indigo blue, but it's a slate gray color. It's just a, if you look on that sample, you'll see. The problem is when you try to reproduce them on a 11 or 24 by 36, I was trying to do it tonight before I came here to print it out and it looked worse than this.
It's probably the difference between that picture and that door. I mean, in terms of contrast.
It's definitely a slate.
Yeah.
And the stone has a lot of grays and slates in it as well. It's very hard to get it to represent that when you're running it through a plotter. It just doesn't have photographic qualities that you'd like to see.
So what, question would be, what is the future expansion plan or what, in a perfect world, how much larger would you make the building?
If you could come up to the mic so, because it's being recorded. No, no, use the bigger one. That one doesn't work too well.
Why we?
It just.
I don't know why we leave it up there.
I don't know. You can take it off the stand if you find it easier, the, the mic part. Right, perfect.
Could you give your name too?
And the address?
Yeah. Give my name. My name's Ross.
Sorry.
I think he turned it off.
There's a button on it, you got to push and then you got to wait a few seconds for it to, on the bottom. I think it's on the bottom. Wait a few seconds for it to come on. It'll blink, I think.
Are you guys hearing me?
Well, that's okay, just talk loud.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just speak up.
That's okay, it's not your fault.
Yes. So, I'm Dr. Ross Hock. Okay. I'm speaking to this.
Okay. Thank you. So my name's Dr. Ross Hock and I would, you know that, but I would just say my name as asked. So the future expansion would be adding about six operatories, it'd be expanding, I can't remember the exact number of square feet, perhaps 500 square feet. Oh, what is?
Yeah, they'd say 1,000 maybe or something, yeah.
Okay, well, it would be a bit bigger, obviously. And so the idea is that the entire layout is built up so we can expand westward. And then we would, of course, we have ample parking, so we would just rotate the staff parking towards the north side of the lot. Of course, the expansion would reflect the cosmetics of the current proposal.
Thank you.
So is there curbing there? I'm a little confused. Laura, what, what's the concern there with the parking? And you mentioned something about paint and curbing, I was confused on that.
With these eight spaces here that are proposed for designated employee spaces, this would just be a painted line on the paving, existing pavement?
Oh, I see.
It wouldn't be an actual curb. The curb would be along this building.
Okay. So there's no curb then proposed because you plan to expand the building in the future?
Yes. If that lot is.
Test.
It's very similar like you would have in a, in a larger parking lot, similar like you have out there where you have areas that are striped off, that don't have curb in front of them, just because a lot of them are pull-through. And it just, where this is, you can see on the building, up here on the top, you can see the curb comes down and it comes along here and it comes all the way. comes down and it comes along here and it comes all the way along the front of the building again, and then wraps around the front here where Laura just ran that. That's already curbed, so there's not going to be cars driving up and over that. It's just, we wanted to have it delineated on the backside there so that the employees can kind of park helter-skelter, that type of thing.
Okay, so the area between where the curb is and where you're going to paint the lines, is that pavement or is that grass?
That's asphalt now.
It's asphalt, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna be pulling out some of the foundations for the current canopy for the drive-through, and so there could be some more asphalt repairs done there, but it'll just be patching again in there as well. It's all hard surface currently.
So there's no danger of if a car should overstep the white line or whatever color you're gonna use, they're not gonna be crashing into the building?
If they do, they'll wreck their car, that building is built like you've never, it's been incredible trying to tear anything down in there. It's all poured concrete and reinforced everything in there, so even if they did hit the building, there would be literally no damage to it. But to answer your question, there is curb protecting the building.
Oh, so I take it you took the vault out?
No, we couldn't because it's holding the building up.
Oh.
It's structural, we cut huge holes into it so that when it's all said and done, you won't be able to tell there was ever a vault there, but I'm telling you, if there's ever a tornado warning, you want a place to go, go get in operatory number four or operatory number five or at his office and you'll be safe. It's 14 inches thick concrete walls, floor, ceiling, double rows of reinforcing, it is an unbelievable piece of concrete.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Is there a basement?
No, slab on grade.
And Doc, where are you located and do you have your own building now, or where are you coming from?
Well, welcome to Plymouth.
Moving about a mile.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay, so everyone is, they're okay with the striping as opposed to the curbing on the west side that we had just talked about, okay? And you said that you would have some irrigation or there's irrigation, you'll make sure that everything is properly working. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Commissioners, if I can just offer the DPW comment should be attached to the motion that the applicant should include a cross connection inspection and/or submit their plans to HydroCor for review.
And that raises, I have another question, so appreciate you taking down the poll, you know, that had the poll sign up at one time, so are you going to have a sign up on that new feature that you're putting up that showed on the rendering?
That'll come at a later date when we come back for the signage approval. Dr. Ross Hock has not, came up with a ground mounted sign design that he likes yet.
Oh, okay.
And so we wanted to do it all at one sweep instead of getting partial on the signage now on the corner facade and then coming back again later for the ground mount, so we'll just do it all at one time.
So Laura, is this going to be just tentative approval tonight or final?
Recommended for final, just so they can continue, they can move directly to the building department and do all of the permits.
And then once they decide on some signage, they would come in just for the approval of the sign?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
What did you say was expected by DPW, because I don't see that.
Yeah, we don't have that report.
I don't see that information.
He didn't, he emailed it to us, he didn't have it ready for packets. He stated the applicant should schedule a cross connection inspection and/or submit their plans to HydroCor for review.
So what does that mean?
What does that mean? I'm not sure.
The concern is lawn irrigation systems with domestic water, so you gotta have the vacuum breakers and backflow preventers and that type of thing. Would you forward us that as well? Would you forward that to me?
Certainly.
Then that way I can coordinate that.
So should schedule a cross connection?
Cross connection inspection, per the recommendation of the DPW foreman.
And it goes beyond that, it'll actually go into the rest of the interior, like on the doctor's equipment, to make sure that it can't flow back into the system as well, so it's, the building department's told us all about it, and so we've been working with them.
So you're aware of what the requirements are?
It's required everywhere, so it's very common.
All right, given all of that, are we ready for our motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, for item 23350519, for tentative and final site plan approval, subject to scheduling a cross connection inspection as recommended by the DPW foreman.
Is there support?
Support, but shouldn't we add that the direct, curbing isn't really required?
And curbing is not necessary.
And Keith, did you support that?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Harbin, supported by Commissioner Postel, to grant tentative and final site plan approval to application 2335-0519. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Welcome to the community.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, you too. Okay, moving on to miscellaneous business, the PC number 2144, the Home Depot, the extension request. So, do you have anything to?
Yes, as provided in the planning packets, two years ago, the commission granted an extension of the original 2014 special land use approval with conditions for outdoor storage at the Plymouth Home Depot at Five Mile and Beck Road. And per that motion, the extension was granted in 2017 for a period of five years or a change in store manager, whichever comes first. So, Home Depot has responsibly notified the township of that change in store management. Mr. Stephen Larkins is here this evening, thank you for making time to be here, and he has submitted a letter dictating that change. The plans that were submitted in 2017 are provided in your packet as well, and following this, we did a review of the existing landscaping that was part of the original plan, which is 1541, and it appears that there is some landscaping that's missing on the site, especially along the southern entrance along Beck, and then there are some firs and spruces and a couple deciduous trees that are missing. We're requesting that these would be replaced to maintain compliance with the special land use extension, and that they may be more, better suited, instead of areas by the truckwells or along the western property edge where there is a lot of vegetation, two more of these two entrances along Beck to really spruce those up and make it more inviting. And that would be the planning commission's discretion.
So Laura, did you ever, I mean, you and I have talked about this privately, so, you know, along that north access road, you know, where the Plymouth Plaza is being proposed?
Correct, here.
So whose responsibility is that? Is that Home Depot's property that they have to put that landscaping in, or is that going to be the Plymouth Plaza developer?
The way that the site plan is drawn, this green belt here would be the responsibility of Home Depot.
Okay, so, well, do you want to step up? You know, so I was at Home Depot, I think it was Friday, taking some pictures, and so one of the associates asked me if he could help me, and so I spoke to Mr. Larkin at that meeting, and so we had a brief discussion about it, and so when I, and I did send some pictures to Laura, so when I look at the south side of that access road, that's the Bank of America is located there, south of that, not where, yeah, down there. If you drive by there and you don't have the pictures with you, do you, Laura?
Yeah, I think I can pull them up real quick.
That strip is beautifully landscaped and well-maintained, the other side isn't.
Who's the Bank of America?
So I'm thinking Bank of America is maintaining that, because you don't do anything along those roads, do you?
Our service crews typically do not do that strip.
Yeah, so that's potentially going to be a problem, because the one side of the road looks quite nice, and the other side doesn't look too good, and then when, as I indicated in my email to you, you know, Laura and I met with the developer, and we talked about landscaping, and he said that, well, he can't do anything there because that's Home Depot's property. So I don't think he's going to maintain it, right.
So I can see the line, knowing that that's not it.
Yeah, so, I don't know, do you have a, so?
No, I'll just have to partner, because all the contracting's done through corporate out of Atlanta, so it's not an independent store thing, so I just have to forward the information up to them, they'll communicate with the service crews, and I'll follow up to make sure it's executed.
Yeah, because he's not going to want to do anything because it's not his property, and I think the bank has been doing that, they do a beautiful job, that saved you a little bit of money or corporate a little bit of money, so maybe you can just do that other. So there's a shot of it looking toward Beck Road, so you can see, right, right, you can see that the trees are so-so, on the other side, you see, you know, healthier trees and you see some understory plantings there, it looks, it looks nice. The other side doesn't look so good. Yeah, that's good shots of that, so you can see there's a marked difference in the quality of maintenance there. That's a good shot of it.
I don't think it was an issue when that property was occupied because they were maintaining it.
Right.
It's only since now, and with the new developer, seeing this plot plan, I get it, it's something that's an easy fix.
And I've seen how you've done the outdoor storage for the season and looking good.
Yeah, it's, your planning commission team's been very excellent with communication, I reached out, just want to make sure I was on, you know, we were aligned and I was doing it right, especially with the season, we were hoping the weather was going to break and we wanted to be ready, so I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And we want to be good stewards of the community.
Right, right, well, you, you know, we had a few bumpy years there at the beginning with it, but it's, the last few years, it's been right on target, so.
We plan on keeping that trend going forward, so.
Okay, any other questions or concerns from the commission on this?
So Laura, are we two years into five-year approval, and if, what does the term look like right now?
Yes, it was re-approved in August of 2017 for five years or change of store management, so the extension should be, if it's befitting to the commission, another five years or a change in store management.
Yeah, from now.
Correct, from today. Mr. Larkin, would you or Home Depot be opposed to the applicant who is developing this corner site, doing their own landscaping additional along this green belt, similar to?
Not opposed to it, as long as it's something that we can maintain, you know, if it's somewhere to the opposite side, we'll be perfectly fine with that.
Similar to this?
Yes.
For some uniformity?
Yep.
Okay.
We're comfortable with that.
So we could require the Plymouth Plaza developer to put that landscaping in?
You could, you have to, you have to plan it and maintain it, so we could, you have to.
No, I don't think we want to go there. Yeah, we don't want to go there. I mean, we're happy just with the access road, so there's some continuity between the two sides of the road.
Well, maybe you want to plan it and maintain it, you know, you've got a place that's right there, I mean, yes.
Like our annual remalling and cleanup and everything like that, they bring enough, so if, the way the plot lines are, I'm more comfortable just knowing it'll be handled and making sure that it's on our list, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so Laura, you can make a note of that, so when they come before us, they're scheduled, if all goes well, the first Wednesday of June, and we'll see how that discussion goes, but we appreciate your cooperation.
If I may, I did have, one thing I wanted to bring up, and Dennis, we talked about it, was the south access from Beck Road.
Right, right.
And the number of plants that we're looking for in there. We constantly battle tractor-trailer truck traffic, not our own, people looking to bypass the intersection, especially now with the construction, people from the garbage disposal facility, stuff like that, or people just coming out the freeway looking for a place to sleep, and they're continually running over that section, and I've already, since I've been at the store, had to replace plants in that section five times. And you can see, we just put one up a couple of weeks ago, and they already ran over the first bush, and it's not our suppliers. It's outside traffic cutting through, especially with the intersection construction, so my concern is, I want to uphold site plan, this is a lot of plants, I don't know how long it's going to last, that's my concern. Something more simpler, or even a little bit setback from the median.
You know, and when I left you from that, and you had mentioned that to me, and when I drove out that exit, I even saw some big truck had to do it, there was a big rut right through the center of it.
Yep, we just replaced those bushes.
Yeah, I did see that. So Laura, you know, it does look pretty nice the way it is right now.
It's simple, it's four rows of bushes, shrubs, but to go this route, those poor moonbeams won't have a chance, that's my concern. Be happy replanting them every year, but the cost and the maintenance going forward through the whole season.
Laura, can we defer that, let's say for another year and see what happens after the reconstruction of the Five and Beck, construction is, you know, doing for them?
For this entrance area and back?
Right, yeah, and just hold off and then, well, we can contact them in a year's time and see if we need to bring that back up to standard, but it does seem, I witnessed it myself, and there's damage there.
And we want to keep appearances up, and I put in the request, and Adam, I got there at the end of last season, and I've already had to replace it, this'll be the fifth time.
Yeah, and I think you told me you did some on the bank, on the bank side or something.
Mm-hmm, did the exit onto Beck Road, the west side, yeah. And it's just, ever since they started, it's accelerated, we've seen a lot of damage to our landscaping.
Yeah, so what's the commission's feeling on that?
Makes sense to me to hold off and see what happens after the construction's over, and there's just no point in planning things that are going to get mowed down.
I'm surprised they use that as a cop.
Yeah, me too, it's not an easy turn, but.
We can make that request.
I think that would be, I think it would be approved when you do, you know, there's a good steward when we call it, and Washington State, they're like, they're somebody, well, and, and trust that.
And as Dennis and I discussed, my primary concern is safety for my associates. It's a loading zone, and the amount of traffic that's been coming through there, people on a forklift and at a very high speed, it's a concern for me, safety is. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we can make a request of the police department to monitor, at least during the construction part of Five and Beck.
It'll be appreciated.
Is it usually late, late at night when that's happening, or?
Yeah, it's a, a lot of them, you know, are, during the day, it's usually from the disposal facility, and I've had some conversations with some of their drivers myself, but at night, it's usually truckers looking to get off the road and find a spot to park and sleep, even though we have signs posted. And we're continuing to monitor those and repeat offenders, talking to authorities, even knocked on a few doors myself. So. It is.
Right, right. That's the same thing. They, they're, some of them are refrigerated trucks and they keep that engine running all, all night long and disturbing. And it's closer to residential.
Gotcha. Yeah, that would be a concern.
Hey Laura, is it possible that, um, concrete or metal balusters could be put, uh, close to the road to stop the big rigs from turning in? At least cutting over on the grass?
We do. Um, usually not doubles. So that's usually the ones that are usually, from my experience, yeah.
So that wouldn't be a, a reasonable solution?
Uh, you would impact the sightlines of the median though.
Well, with your monitoring, especially with the disposal trucks coming through and then what, once that construction on the roadways are done, hopefully that will.
Hopefully it will drop significantly, yes.
All right. So is there a, a motion?
Mr. Commissioner, I make a motion to approve application two one four four, Home Depot Store, Plymouth Store twenty seven sixty-two, uh, for an extension request, uh, to begin and to last for, to begin now to last for an additional five years, based on the new management change for their outdoor storage compliance.
Yeah, or, or a change in management.
For change in management.
Do you want to stand there about the, that one spot coming back in the year?
Right.
And they're going to maintain the land through the planet?
Uh, well, first I wanted to take care of the south. That we'll, we'll defer on the plantings for.
For on the plantings at the south entrance, um, off of Beck Road. And we'll look for, uh, the applicant to, uh, uh, do some plantings on the north entrance off of Beck Road.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Harvard and supported by Commissioner Barbarina. So you're, so but, uh, just to make sure I have this right. So going back to that north entrance, you're going to do the plantings, but if, if the developer wants to put some plantings in, that's okay with you?
I'm okay with it as long as it's within accordance to your approval.
Oh, okay.
And we'll maintain it. I'll move, I'll, I already spoke with my regional director.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's something we'll have to get into the nitty gritty next time we meet with that developer. But we're not sure where that's going. All right.
So who would maintain them?
Home Depot.
Oh, maintain.
Love the plant.
Yeah.
It's on our plot plan. We'll maintain. I'd rather not cause any, you know, confrontation with a neighbor and just make sure that it's all done correctly at the same time. When we do our remalling and everything.
And maybe Laura, we should, we should have a communication line with him, you know, when we have the discussion with the Plymouth Plaza people so that he's aware. We'll, we'll keep you in contact.
I've met the gentleman, uh, in my store.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we've had some dialogue already.
Oh, okay. All right. All, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Well, thanks very much.
Oh, thank you very much. So just to clarify, we're withholding on the south entrance?
Correct.
And then we're taking care of the rest of the perimeter except for the north entrance till you let me know.
Right.
Correct.
All right. Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have the Planning and Zoning Monthly Report. Um, so are there any questions? I have, I have one. Uh, oh, did you start it to talk? Oh, uh, so Laura, um, you know, the Ann Arbor Forest at Crossford Picnic Basket?
Yes.
So I see that, uh, the final stamping was initiated, but there's insufficient documentation provided to close the file. So what is the holdup exactly? Is there a backstory to this?
The applicant had submitted plans with Jana, but they had never submitted, um, their legal documentation and it was never recorded. And then come to find when they submitted their documentation that the township attorney had never actually reviewed it. So that whole process had to be initiated. Um, and then all of their engineering permits, you know, they have a time limit. So they lapsed. They had to go back. Um, they had to go back to the DEQ. Um, they had some wetland mitigation because they didn't properly map their wetlands, um, in their initial two thousand and thirteen plan. So there have been a number of changes. It sounds like they are very close. And, um, right now we're waiting on their final legal. And we're waiting on four copies of their revised site plan. They did add some additional landscaping, from what was previously, uh, required. And, um, once they submit those documents, then we can close the project file out and they can proceed with the building department on their permits.
And is this the same group that is proposing, uh, the other cluster housing over off of North Territoria?
At one point it was, but it seems that the parties have broken apart now. Um, and it is two different entities.
Okay. You have it?
Yeah, one question. About the, um, Phoenix Mill doesn't show up on here, the Northville Road property. Whatever happened with that? What's the current status of that?
They actually just submitted last week, I believe, um, for consideration of a brownfield plan. They're still doing their environmental. Um, and they are going to be coming before the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority in, um, June, um, for consideration of their brownfield plan. And if that's approved, then they'll continue. There's some, um, lead and asbestos at the site, um, that they would like, um. Mm-hmm, yeah, they're, they're requesting that. Um, and then once that happens, then they're going to come before the commission for site plan approval.
Other questions? Okay, is there a motion to receive and file?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file the Planning and Zoning Monthly Report for April two thousand and nineteen.
And is there support?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Barbarina and supported by Commissioner itself to receive and file the Planning and Zoning Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the draft of the, the DDA plan. Are there any questions or comments? Pretty interesting. I have. Who wrote it? Was McKenna involved in this?
Yes.
So I do have a few questions as soon as I find my comments. So on page ten, Existing Streets and Public Facilities. So on what needs work, it's interesting where it talked about the, um, the driveway accesses, that there's a Michigan Access Management Guidebook that recommends, um, driveway openings of three hundred and fifty feet on forty-five mile an hour roadway. But yet the township and the city both indicate three hundred. So should, should we match what this Michigan Access Management Guidebook is for?
Uh, yes, I would say that the three hundred, um, minimum spacing would be outdated at this point. It may, it may have changed the Michigan, um, guidebook. I want to say is from two thousand and eleven or fourteen. And our zoning ordinance with the, uh, city predates that.
Okay. Because then the rest of this is sort of confusing about some of the driveways a hundred feet apart. Uh, you know, that whole thing. And I think that's part of the problem along that roadway is there's just so many curb cuts. And it's, you know, it's developed many years ago over a period of time with two different municipalities. So I can understand. But we should try to get, to me, more in lines with that.
I agree. It only reduces the number of conflict points on the roadway.
And then, uh, let me see. So on page fourteen, under complete streets, it's the intent of the DDA to ensure the Ann Arbor Road, uh, is, um, designed to enhance a complete street approach. Is that something that we can do as a township or is that more the responsibility of the county and, or the state?
In our experience, it has to be initiated and led by the local municipality. Otherwise, it really doesn't come to fruition. Because what we find is that there's some change in thought, but mostly the roadway agencies are just concerned about movement of vehicles, themselves and their efficiency and not necessarily pedestrians.
So that's something that we would just sort of wait to see what the DDA wants to do about that in the future?
Yes, I think that, um, so one of the, one of the things for the complete streets would be making sure that there's no gaps in the sidewalk network. And I think that's something that the DDA has identified and the township itself, um, on the sidewalk gap program, uh, closing those gaps and making sure that they are, um, adequate. Um, but also, um, this lends itself to when we receive site plans, um, at the planning commission. For instance, um, at the Quick Pass Car Wash, um, the entrance there to, uh, Tavistock for pedestrians, that didn't have the right ADA, um, material and slope. So that's going to be corrected as part of bringing that former Denny's Restaurant into compliance. Um, so those are things that the township can do, um, as we see sites redeveloped and improved. You know, the same with Burger King, they're adding that one pedestrian pathway, making sure that's ADA to the building. So, um, over time you will see those. But for larger projects, it kind of has to be spearheaded directly by the township and then collaboration with, uh, the roadway agencies.
So then also on page eighteen, under parking, I thought this was an interesting, um, concept about, uh, you could have, uh, you could have the elimination of automobile parking space if you have four bicycle spots. Uh, but I don't see that very viable. This is more of a comment from me until more complete streets and that, that roadway is made safer, uh, you know, for bicycle traffic because right now it's, and it even gets into this a little bit about sidewalks and who can ride on the sidewalk and all of that stuff.
With, uh, uh, intersect, or, uh, curb cuts every hundred feet or so, you'd have to be crazy to ride a bicycle along there.
Exactly.
That'll never, that'll never be bicycle friendly.
And then on page twenty-three, uh, what's working, in fact, it's all in bold, that, uh, township's master plan, land use has the, the purpose of the joint zoning district was to create a visible cohesive on both sides of Ann Arbor Road and foster a sense of, of place. I was going to look to see if that's also in the city master plan.
Hmm.
Because that should be, and aren't, are they still in the process of revising their master plan?
No, that has been adopted.
That's been adopted already? Yeah, that would be interesting to see that they should have that in there too. Uh, because it's, it's a joint project on both, for both municipalities. And then one other comment was on, on page twenty-eight where they talk about, um, this last sentence, additional architectural elements, non-motorized amenities and inclusion of other features may be required by the planning commission for these areas. But then later on page thirty-one, it does say that, that we did set up some design standards. So that's a little confusing. Yeah, they should, they should have, I mean, they've already adopted this, haven't they? Or is this a?
The two, the two thousand and seven, um, architectural standards were adopted.
Yeah. But I mean, it should be clearer in this document because I got a little confused when I was reading that.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Yeah. And then one other thing, uh, that, that you might want to look into or see if you want to make the comment. You know, you, you talk about the, um, this is on page thirty-one, what needs work. So it talks about the depth, the varying depths, you know, across Ann Arbor Road. And the alleys were closed, but also there is some infrastructure limits there. You know, for example, when they put, uh, I think it's the Autozone, was, and remember we had them look the building around because there's a big sewer line there and some cabling. And so that limits development and layout on the, on a particular parcel because they are, it's not only the depth, but it's what lies underneath it.
Okay.
So you might want to just, uh, you know, look at that. And if you're going to do a revision of this, you might want to state something like that.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay, so what, what kind of a motion are you looking for from us?
Um, just to receive and file, um, with the comments, um, before it goes to the DDA.
Okay.
Thank you for reviewing it.
Yeah. So is there such a motion?
I have motion to receive and file the Ann Arbor Road Corridor twenty fifty Development Plan and Tax Increment Finance.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Dorsevitz in support of, uh, Commissioner Barbarina to receive and file the, the DDA plan draft. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other comments from the commission?
I have a question, Laura. Last meeting, we had an applicant that was close to making a presentation to build a funeral home. As I recall, Five Mile and Hagerty, is that still possible or has that gone away?
I haven't heard anything from them yet. They haven't reached out.
So are all the trees.
Yeah.
They, they stripped that whole area.
Any other comments, concerns, questions?
Commissioners?
Yeah.
Could I make a couple updates?
Sure.
Would that be okay? Thank you. Um, the first thing I wanted to touch on was the Woodlands Ordinance. I know that this is something that we had discussed, um, previously. And then trustee Dorsevitz, uh, you brought this up to the board. Um, based on what we've heard, if the township is serious about a Woodlands Ordinance, then, um, probably to move that along, the planning commission should make a recommendation to the board to consider that. There would have to be a, a number of different steps, um, as I outlined. Um, but it's.
So what should the next steps be? Should this board take action or the, uh, board of trustees?
Um, excuse me, I'm sorry. Because the Woodlands Ordinance would be in the general code of ordinance and not in the zoning ordinance. But does it impact, uh, site plans and the review of development in the township? Uh, the planning commission should make a recommendation to the board to consider, um, such an ordinance.
Like a formal recommendation of some sort?
Yes.
I know, I know the supervisor was looking for some input from, from us to identify possibly four sites, minimum maybe of four sites in the township that might be subject to such an ordinance. And I can think of four, I'm not sure if they're pertinent, if they're protected already, like Miller Woods. Is Miller Woods protected? I don't know. Is it?
It's deed restricted.
It's deed restricted?
Yeah.
And is the property that is?
Next to it?
No, that has, uh, grown from the township park, the, the northern end of the township park, the eight acres, is that protected? That's where the parking lot came in and they clear cut for the parking lot. And then there's the rest of the trees, which is about six acres. So is that protected? Question mark. The property on Beck Road between Ann Arbor Road and Ann Arbor Trail, that's on the west side of the street, is heavily wooded? Is that protected? Don't know. Property on Ann, uh, North Territorial, that is north of North Territorial and just east of Napier. That is another large swatch of land that is heavily wooded and rolls, that's where the one person wants to put a small development. But when you go further north, there's still quite a bit of woodlands. So there are at least four. I'm sure there are more than four parcels. So the concern is that, uh, Kent Township is in current litigation with their Woodlands Ordinance for some reason. And do we want to put ourselves in that sort of a jeopardy position, but at the same time, we have to be responsible?
Yeah.
Planners, so.
I, and I think that was the kind of the, when I brought up the board, that was kind of the general sentiment is that we don't want to.
that was kind of the general sentiment, is that we don't want to be too heavy-handed and end up in the kind of that situation that happened in Canton. But on the other hand, I, I think there was pretty much broad support for, you know, as Jim was just articulating.
Well, and I think that if we looked at neighboring ordinances, if we looked at like, like Novi's ordinance, which I've, I've referenced in the past, that had some of the applicants that recently clear cut it and were supposed to leave trees, their penalty would have been much more severe in Novi than it was here. I mean, not three fifty a tree, probably would have ended up more like fifteen hundred a tree. And they would have not clear cut because they wouldn't have wanted to pay that penalty.
Yeah.
So.
Three fifty is just not much of a deterrent.
So if we didn't have an ordinance, at least if we had some sort of, something in respect to penalties.
Something a little more.
A little, with a little more meat on the bone.
Yeah.
I think that would maybe be a happy medium of sorts. If we don't want to do a full-blown ordinance, just have little stricter penalties. That's my, my two cents.
Well, perhaps what we should do, I'm kind of looking to you, Laura, about, you know, some of the parcels that were mentioned now. Should we create a, you know, formal motion that we would then, you know, send on to the trustees identifying some of these? We believe a woodland ordinance needs to be adopted to protect areas such as, and then we limit some, or we identify what some of those areas might be?
I think that would be fine. I think we just did identify some of them if you wanted to include them tonight.
I did see that, Laura, I think you, I think you identified some. You said, wait, I'm looking at this. The southwest corner of Schoolcraft and Hagerty, the southwest corner of Five Mile Road and Hagerty, the northeast corner of Plymouth and Hagerty, and nine acres behind the Comfort Inn, and the property behind the Alps Club.
So there's another five or six, so there's at least ten parcels. And then I'm sure there's even more.
There's a lot. Well, maybe Laura and I could work up some, some of these sites and then maybe at our, we have a special meeting as a reminder.
Yeah.
Do that, or the following, you know, we'll do it by the end of June, one of the two meetings in June. And we'll, we'll get something together.
Okay, thank you. There is one more thing that I wanted to discuss. If you'll recall, this is at Five and Ridge for the Ridge Road Industrial Park. And we saw this, this says December. So it was either December or the January meeting when the Planning Commission reviewed the tentative site plan, not for any buildings, but just. Correct, for the, for the lots. And as part of this site, you know, we have the Johnson Creek, which was rezoned in two thousand and sixteen. This, it's a small stretch all along the creek. Yep, as public lands. And so as part of this proposal, there is, there is a pathway that, as shown here, intends to wrap around the entire industrial complex with a small parking lot of ten spaces off of Ridge Road. This pathway is proposed to be an eight-foot crushed aggregate like you see in the national parks. And that can be ADA compliant. However, because of the, the slope of the terrain, especially even in this area right here, it's a peak that kind of goes between these two low, low areas. So the slope of that, even though the material may be ADA compliant, the slope would never be compliant without significant moving of the earth in this, in this area. So right off the bat, this, this trail, which under, from, from what I understand, was intended to be not just for the employees of this, but as this would be a, a public facility, will not truly be public. Yes, and this, this path is also approximately seven thousand linear feet, which is a considerable distance if the township is to take the path over and, and maintain it in perpetuity. So before this application comes before you for final site plan approval, I'm looking for some feedback on this pathway and if this is really in the best interest of the industrial facility and of residents. Previously, the parking was proposed in this corner area. And the, the path was shorter along the creek more, which I think was intended to really allow for fishermen to use the path. Because of how close this is to the CX Railroad, parking lot there cannot be accommodated. So that's why the path loops all around. But if this is to be intended for someone for fishing, it's going to be awfully difficult for someone to carry their tackle and everything all around. So I'm just looking for any feedback from the commission. And the rezoning, I wasn't here at the time when that went through for the public lands along the creek, if there was any discussion at that time.
Not really.
Well, the discussion was to protect the creek.
Yeah.
Predominantly was to make sure that that creek was not, you know, not meeting it. Because you're right up there, so you can't park, there's no way to park up there because of the railroad.
Yes, it's, it's too close here to have an access point.
So it kind of defeats the whole purpose of people being able to utilize the trail at the initial checkpoint.
Unless the parking were somehow added into the park.
Does the trail go all the way around or? Yeah, the proposed one.
Mm-hmm, it does loop all the way around these units. And there is a connection proposed right here. And then it's not showing, but they have proposed another connection between these units. Although this industrial park will not have sidewalks, so it's.
So there's really no, there's maybe some street parking there or street wide enough?
No, it's pretty much, yeah, just for the truck traffic intended to have the turning radiuses, so.
So it would be, it'd be a pathway that nobody ever uses.
Or a dangerous pathway if someone was trying to cut through.
Yeah.
Unless they park them, they're grown and walked all the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a point.
Yeah.
Is it within our purviewed on one of those sites, a site that makes sense, where there, we would just take maybe six spaces and dedicate it for park, parking? Seven, but did you say there was an access between two of those sites?
They, they were proposing access, yes, between these two. It, it's still fluid right now. They're trying to develop the pathway that makes the most sense, that stays out of the wetlands down here.
I would say somewhere on this.
Could you put the? Laura, could you put the, if there's a slope problem here, could you do a lot right around this area?
I don't know, maybe bring it up on Google Earth.
Uh, perhaps.
Yeah, it seems like there might be another place that a parking lot could go on the site.
Here? Uh, the city of Detroit owns this property.
They have it for sale, don't they?
That's the, yeah, they have, but it doesn't have water, so.
So the property we saw, it goes, goes to the creek, just to the creek? It doesn't go over to the other side of the creek?
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. I, it's, this is from memory. No, I, I believe the creek was the dividing part between the parcel.
We think there would be some.
I, I don't. I might be wrong, I'm, yeah, I'm trying to remember. Maybe.
So the, so the park is only on sort of like the, on our side, the township side of the creek?
Yeah, so.
Not township, but the city owns the park.
Yeah, so, so the town, so the, the, the history of it was that the, the parcels had gone into tax foreclosure. So the township bought them from the county on, on, by paying the back taxes. And then, but the city of Detroit, the, the other side of it was the city, originally city Detroit's property. And they sued, they, on the basis that they never got proper notice about the tax delinquency. And so they ended up getting the property back. And we ended up, we ended up settling it so that the township was able to sell the property and recover all of our costs, including our legal fees and, and then. Yeah, we were, we were up till.
Does the city of Detroit pay property tax to the township for that property?
So it's, as long as it, my understanding is that so long as it's being used for a public purpose, then it does not go on the tax rolls, right? But there was some discussion as to whether, if it's, if it's advertised for sale, does that automatically, it's no longer public purpose? But, well, I mean, it was always public property. I mean, government doesn't pay taxes to itself. So it was always, you know, public property. But I don't know if they've had any, I, I've never heard of any activity really.
So you are meeting with the developers, the Hillside people to figure out how to resolve this?
They had, they have asked for the township to weigh in on the pathway. Was there any public feedback or comment during that process of the rezoning that led you to believe it would be utilized by the public or that there was a demand, a need?
There was a, they, yeah, there was a concern about rezoning it and how that might impact on development. You know, we didn't want to.
There was a concern about the creek that it needs to.
Right, yeah. And Northville was doing something on their side.
Right. Northville does have a bike path right here and it has a, a trailhead.
Doesn't the creek have that brown trout or?
Yeah.
It goes right through, I'd say, Creekville.
Yeah.
Saint Lawrence Estates, Seven Mile.
Yeah.
The drain. So the west, yeah, the west portion is the.
So what's up, so the other side is Northville, right?
Mm-hmm. I guess they did a sidewalk two weeks ago on the property and. Uh, Hillside. The township was invited, but we couldn't make it. But they said it was quite, quite beautiful, that there's some.
I didn't realize there was so much meadow, I forgot about that. Meadow, yeah. Well, it would be a nice amenity for the people that would work there, just at lunch hour to, to walk along the creek. Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And it would be a bonus if our, our citizens could take advantage of it as well. It's just a matter of logistics that they want to do. And, and what they would suggest, if Hillside has some ideas in terms of parking there. Say, this is where we're at and we're trying to be, we'd like people to be able to utilize it. And would they be willing to maintain it? Because if you say, well, we would have to maintain it, what if we have to maintain it, you know?
That's a significant cost.
I'm sure it is.
One option that I presented was if it was to be a shared maintenance agreement between the Industrial Park Association that will take over eventually for this area and the township, or if it would be completely maintained by the industrial association. And I think that changes if it's truly meant to be a public amenity or if it's really meant for, mm-hmm, those who, you know, use the site and.
But that, but that's a really good point about who's going to maintain it. You know, it's a lot.
Well, if, if, if we want our citizens to be able to use it, utilize it, and they want their employees to be able to utilize it, they're creating, I think, a shared, shared maintenance agreement. I mean, we're not, we're not realizing the whole run of maintenance. They're not realizing the whole run of maintenance. I guess what really determines how many people are going to use it. I think that's the question.
A, a path to nowhere that doesn't get used is silly. That's right.
Do you have to, with that, with that material, Laura, do you have to, do you have weeds that grow in it? And so you got to weed whack and things like that or?
Yes, you would need to maintain, maintain the surface, but then also the brush on either side of the pathway. Because some of these areas are more wooded, would need to be, you know, cut back annually.
Yeah, they close in very quickly.
Yeah, they do.
Trustee Dorsevitz, is this something that you think the board should discuss?
Yeah, it's going to be worthwhile.
You got money riding on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. What, what's kind of an order of magnitude, would it, what do you think it would cost to maintain it? Hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands?
On an annual basis?
Yeah.
Maybe.
So it wouldn't be a hundred thousand dollars? The point of it is to allow people to have access to the creek?
And that's not on the creek?
It's not on the creek.
Yeah, how far is that, how many millio feet is that path from the creek? That's gotta be quite a distance, I would think.
Yeah, it's over.
You right there between six and seven where the lot split is?
Mm-hmm.
That's a long way, that's the, that's the longest way, right? I mean, that's the furthest from the creek.
Yes, and Hillside has, there are some really beautiful spaces that they have mapped out along the creek that they. Yeah, as outlook points. Because of how those get closer to the water and the floodway, they might have to be boardwalks, which would drastically increase, you know, the cost of construction and maintenance, yes. But there are some really pristine areas in there.
Well, you have eight lots, so you have eight users, you have one or two that are employed value. So I, I don't know, if you split it up between eight lots and township.
Yeah.
I mean, it can't be, it's gotta be work.
Or what if the, what if the township did the path where the, along the river or the creek, rather, and the association took on the rest of the path? So it were a longer path, so they connect. Right, so they have a long path.
Maybe they take their path.
Right.
And then it's a matter of parking.
And then maybe there could be something along that, the northernmost lot there where there's room for, for a pathway and, or a driveway or something signed to say that you could park there perhaps.
For lot seven? For lot seven?
So Laura, go on.
Because in essence, the township owns that swatch of land, right, where the creek is, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, as an easement.
Right. So you might as well do something with it.
Well, I, you know, the other question I had, we were talking about the maintenance, so it's gonna be an aggregate material. And how often does that have to be replenished, and how do the trucks, or, you know, access that? Is that another issue that needs to be considered?
I think they use those little boat, like little, not carts, but little tractors.
Uh, gators?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that's what like the metro parks use, and they don't have trucks back there.
Yeah. Not me personally, but yeah.
So that's not gonna be an issue to have act, for the township to a, access that path for more major, um, maintenance on it?
If it floods out it? Yeah, I gotta believe it would be.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's, that would be buggy.
I have not, no, I couldn't make the tour.
And you know, if they do, you.
Yeah, they did, they did wear boots.
Did they?
Mm-hmm.
So who would be responsible for building these boardwalks?
Right now, uh, Hillside has, uh, budgeted to construct the, the pathway, not the boardwalks, but the, the pathway and the parking lot of ten spaces.
Cause my concern about the boardwa, I've noticed this in Novi, they use a lot of boardwalks. I don't know if you've noticed it. And some of them don't look, and they don't look too good.
No, they go bad.
I don't know if you use that Trex material, which I know is very expensive, or some, you know, something that is going to last, you know, some years, cause the stuff I've seen in Novi just doesn't seem to last.
Yeah, but the metro parks have them and the state parks.
Yes, they do.
I don't know, maybe they have a better budget to maintain them.
Right. That looks good.
And that looks great. And that's always looked great.
I, I don't know how they maintain it, yeah.
And there's the one.
Are we missing the point?
There's the one over lakes on Napier, goes nowhere.
Are we missing the point that, uh, it's one thing to preserve an area, and it's another thing to go through an expensive process of giving access to it when in fact it's likely there'll be no access except for a handful of people?
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's kind of my question.
That's, that's really the issue.
Who's, who's gonna actually use it?
Not who's gonna pay for it, but is it gonna be used, and is it reasonable? And it's one thing to preserve it, but to, to actually provide all the access when access isn't gonna be utilized, it don't make a lot of sense.
So, and it's not near residential area, so people that would wanna go for a walk, have, have to get in their car, drive, park. If they're gonna do that, they're gonna go to Township Park, or they're gonna come from Northville.
If you can utilize the creek, it's a little, uh, advantage.
If you fish.
That, that is also a big garbage truck thoroughfare, for whatever that's worth, big garbage truck.
Yeah.
Well, Keith, if they're, if they're agreeing to push the path in and provide parking, and they, I mean, they would have, if they're putting it in, they're gonna maintain it, it's gonna be on the property. It's not gonna be on our lot.
Well, as it's proposed, they would, they would construct it, and there would be a public easement that would run, and then the township would be responsible for that maintenance.
So that's their, that's their current proposal, and they would be responsible for maintenance.
Yeah.
I think if it gets signed as township land and is on maps and, um, people would learn about it and use it.
Well Laura, is there, is this gonna tie into whatever's happening on the Northville side? Would people, you know, for example, live in Northville, would, would this be a continuation of what they have available there?
Well.
So maybe there would be more use, and, and maybe some of the Plymouth people, right? Yeah, I think we need to look at, at a larger picture.
Uh, oh yeah, that's where Ridge is closed.
It's open now.
Oh, they opened it?
Yeah.
It's been open for probably a month or two.
I thought when this was originally pushed through, that this was all gonna connect to Northville and like be more than just a, a pathway to a creek.
I did ask that.
It just seemed like there was, I'm sorry, there's a bigger vision for this whole piece of land when it, it was, I think, pushed through quite quickly.
It was.
I did inquire with the township planner, um, in Northville about plans for this connection, because when I first learned of it too, I thought this is kind of isolated. And it sounds like there are plans, um, along Five Mile for, um, an eight to ten foot bike path. That, that's off, off the road. Um, so it, like the, the pathway that you see in Heinz Park, right? Um, that asphalt pathway, um, that would run along here. Um, but until these are developed, there wouldn't be, um, any connection. And it's uncertain how that would fare with, uh, the railroad, if they would allow for a crossing there or not, and if there's wetlands that might change this area.
Plus the garbage trucks, as John had pointed out.
Do you know, is that part of the Borders to Borders Trail?
Um.
The what?
Borders to Border, there's a lot of them in Ann Arbor, and they're trying to connect like all the counties.
I don't think so.
Railroad tracks?
Kind of like that, mm-hmm.
What's? Have you ever been in that one in, near Rochester, uh?
The Pollyan?
That, uh, that's just not, that's beautiful.
Yeah, cause up, um, like Heinz Drive or Heinz Park, how that has, um, the bike trails, and then it's coming through Mayberry State Park now, and it's, eventually will connect like into Washdenaw, and then continuing on, and across the whole state to the, to Lake Michigan.
Yeah, I read that article, or I read an article.
I wonder with this path, if, if Northville would connect it with Mayberry. Does it go that far? And what, I mean, what is their vision?
Maybe, maybe get Gary Roberts in here Laura to explain the, what the vision looks like.
When I did ask their, um, planner, Jennifer Frye, she said that it's, this pathway and how it goes behind these, this neighborhood is mostly just used by the resident, local residents.
I think connectivity is the key. If they can connect to something, it makes a lot more sense than not.
You can't, you can't access it. It's almost like Miller Park. I mean, on the east end, it's a nice little park, but nobody.
But if that Northville Township. Right. But if Northville Township is thinking about doing something that might make it connected, that would be a, certainly useful information.
Okay. I'll inquire again with them.
You know, without, without connection, you have an isolated thing, it really doesn't make sense.
It's good that it's preserved, and that it's not.
Preserved, yes.
But to be utilized is another goal.
Anything else, or?
Trustee Dershowitz, is this something that you'd like to take up with the board before? I know the applicant intends to come back to the Planning Commission for the June meeting, so.
I don't know when I, I can't, don't remember when I next meeting.
Not the special.
Correct, not the special meeting, just the regular meeting. June fifth.
And what makes it special?
It's.
Liam.
It's technically our, our work session, but it will be, um, a special meeting so that we can take action on items.
Action on what?
The Beck Road Plaza.
Right.
Has been requested.
If, if, if the, if he gets his plan in by what, is it May twenty fifth?
Oh yeah, I believe it's next week.
Yeah.
At least he paid his taxes.
It's the beginning. Anything else?
No, thank you for your feedback.
Anything from anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Move back Commissioner Barberina, support it back Commissioner Harp to adjourn the meeting at, uh, eight, um, eight forty-four. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we adjourn.